If you don't mind.
Brian has arrived.
Okay. I'd like to open up the special Tuesday, April 27th, meeting in the Bellingham Planning Board via Zoom. Jim, can you let the audience know and the participants why we're able to do this via Zoom?
Yes, just pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting will be held via the Zoom online options. You can see the information instructions at the end of the agenda.
So this is a continuation of the public hearing for 161 and 169 Maple Street. The applicant is Will Boyle, LMP Properties LLC in Orange, J.D. Raymond. Jim, can you bring us up to speed on what's happened since our last meeting?
Absolutely. So as you probably recall, the board continued the meeting till this evening when requested that I begin to draft two decisions for your consideration at this meeting, one being the something that resembles a favorable decision and one that resembles a denial. And the board continued that meeting while leaving the hearing open so that they give an opportunity for the applicant to provide further information, which, as you know, they have, the applicant has provided some additional information. You have a turning, an updated turning radius plan sheet as part of your package, as well as a couple of emails that Attorney Crowe has provided, and I forwarded along to you all. And so, you know, so just as a reminder, so the hearing is still open and there was some additional information that you've been provided. And so that's where we are.
So at this point, does the applicant or the public have anything additional they want to add to the hearing record?
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to talk one more time. For the record, my name is Kim Crowe. On behalf of the applicant, I'm here with Will Boyle and Steve Di Ambrosio from GZA. Steve would be happy to present the auto turn plans if the board would like to take a look at them. We did submit an email with some additional information for ways that we thought we might be able to address some of the board members' concerns that were raised at the last hearing. Now, there were some questions about the standard of review where there is an existing business and a development plan application. So I wanted to just reiterate one more time that the purpose of the development plan application is to ensure adequate review of development plans, which may have significant impacts on traffic, drainage, town services, environmental quality, and community character. As we all know, the mulch business has been at the site for 10 years or more at this point, and the mulch itself doesn't create any impacts, certainly none that are significant because it's been there. The development plan does incorporate the stormwater system that's being proposed and additional other improvements to the site that are designed to reasonably enhance the impact of the business, or depending on which way you look at it, reasonably accommodate the community as far as trying to protect any offsets from the use of the property. It is a use that's allowed of right because it's a prior nonconforming use. It would currently require a special permit. The environmental control section of the bylaws to which the development plan review looks, under a development plan review, the board does look to see if those environmental controls have been met. We've talked a lot about certain aspects of them and the exceptions that are applicable, but I did also want to point out the exception for special permits. There's a special permit section under Article 9, which is Section 24055. And that says that a proposed use that receives a special permit doesn't actually have to meet the environmental controls. So the bylaws do anticipate some leeway from those environmental controls for something new coming in. Here we have something existing, and in some regards, we're being held to at least the same, if not in some aspects, a higher standard than what the bylaws say, where the bylaws do allow comparisons between sites as an avenue for showing compliance with those environmental controls. And we do believe that we've presented evidence in the record to show that we do comply. The board was also concerned with the site traffic affecting Maple Street. I wanted to point out, there was discussion about the gate at the last meeting, and I did confirm with the client, the drivers have a cellphone app that allows them to open the gate. So number one, the gate will be open while the business is operating. But number two, if that first truck gets there and the gate isn't open, they can control it from their phone. So there won't be the stopping on Maple Street that the board was concerned with. And we did provide the updated turning radiuses. If you'd like additional information on those tonight, we could do that. And one of the emails I sent to Jim Cupfer, I also had proposed signs 500 feet from each side that the applicant would install to show trucks coming ahead to just provide a little bit additional warning to drivers.
Thank you.
The fire access, I had proposed that we have an onsite review with the fire chief after the 30-foot roadway down the middle is painted. This is assuming, of course, that the development plan is approved and we're allowed to make the improvements, have an onsite meeting that uses the 15-foot exterior roadway and the 30-foot painted roadway, and ensure that there is adequate access for the fire truck before there's a fence shown on the plan, sort of a pole fence that goes around the 15-foot exterior. So before that was put up, have sort of a drive-through to make sure that the fire chief is comfortable with the site. As far as the noise is concerned, there were additional questions about that. I did forward this morning an email from Maple Gate, which is the closest to Butter, that's not owned by LMP, that might be able to hear any noise from the site. And they did submit an email in support. Due to a conflict, they were unable to attend tonight and express that directly to you. But they did want, Mr. French did want to send an email saying that he does support approval of this plan so that the improvements can be made to the site. And one other suggestion that was in my earlier email to Mr. Cupfer was a post-approval and post-wall installation noise study that's based on sound measurements, which is a little bit less than what Tech Environmental had recommended. They recommend this ambient acoustical modeling over a multi-day period that goes beyond what the bylaws talk about for noise measurement. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to address them. We're happy to go over the plans in more detail. I know the board has heard a lot about this project, and we're appreciative and cognizant of the time that you've already spent on it. So I'll stop there unless there's anything else that you'd like to hear from us.
Jim, you've received some documents from the applicant? Is that correct?
Yep, yeah. And you have them in your package this evening in the drop.
Incorporated that?
Correct, yes.
Steve, briefly, do you want to give us an overview of what's latest on the truck traffic and the turning radius?
Certainly. Trying to share my screen. Okay, is everyone seeing a plan sheet? Okay, I see some. That's good. So the prior version did not show the painted 30-foot driveway in the middle of the site. So there's some question as to whether or not the vehicle, as it turned in and out of the site, would be able to do so into and out of that painted 30-foot driveway. So we've revised the graphic showing the truck entering from the north, that it is able to turn into the 30-foot painted drive, that as it exits from the north, if the truck is positioned within the 30-foot drive, it's able to make the turn out onto Maple Street and then exiting to the south, the same. We show the vehicle in the painted 30-foot driveway, making its way onto Maple Street. Really, that was the only revision to the plan, was just showing this painted area on each of the turning movements.
Steve, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant or the public have any other comments to make? Hearing none, what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
I'll need a second on that, please.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in the floor that has been seconded to close the public hearing on 161, 169 Maple Street, the continuation of the development plan as far as the public hearing. All those who favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion passes unanimously. Jim, it follows my understanding that we requested that you draft two decisions, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And can you give us, one is a favorable decision. Can you give us an overview of that decision, and has that been provided to the applicant?
No, the applicant did not request the decision, but certainly if you guys move forward with this, we'll get the executed decision over to them right away.
So can you give us an overview of the detail of the decision?
Yeah, so.
And is it a favorable decision?
Right. So yes, for the favorable decision, as Attorney Crowe actually mentioned, the applicant did provide a number of conditions that they were interested in incorporating, and I tried my best to incorporate as many as I thought that the board had touched on throughout the hearing. So in the favorable decision draft, you'll see a number of determinations, just essentially reviewing, you know, all the things that you all have discussed over the past, with almost six months now, I guess. And, you know, some very administrative things that kind of rehash to set the stage that there's an A&R established for 161 to 169. There's an order of conditions already established, the use on the site, that it's not in a water resource district, that it is on a scenic road, you know, it says the very administrative things that we put in all of our development plans. And then touching on a number of the performance requirements through the environmental controls that you guys have all discussed over these past several months, you know, lighting that, you know, that they aren't anticipating having any lighting. So clearly, photometric plan wasn't required, and that they would meet that standard. But if, you know, if there was going to be some added, that they would need to meet the standard moving forward, same with, you know, things like air quality. Obviously, we discussed odorous emissions at length, hazardous materials. The applicant has provided some. I know there was some concerns about some additional information about dyes. So there's conditions in there about, you know, just having the applicant provide a final list at the end of the day. Vibrations, electrical disturbance, I don't think the board really, we didn't dive too much into other than the fact that, you know, there's confirmation that it appears that the applicant meets it. Stormwater management, obviously, we incorporated a lot of the language that the applicant has already kind of thoroughly vetted through the Order of Conditions with the Conservation Commission, so establishing that, you know, diving into the noise bylaw again, you know, kind of talking about taking from what both their survey has stated and our peer review engineer had discussed at our last meeting and the further comments that were provided, again, addressing access points and safety concerns, obviously incorporating the concerns from both the applicant and the deputy fire chief. You know, touching on the cut and fill, obviously, there's not much to discuss there, so it's pretty minimal at that point. Same with trees removed. We do talk about, a little bit about planting, and that's one of the conditions that I know the applicant was, you know, certainly willing to assist with the landscaping up in the front, so certainly incorporated that into there. Let's see, moving on down, touching on what Mr. Di Ambrosio had mentioned about the turning radiuses and the board's concerns about, you know, adequability to make those maneuvers incorporating some of those site sheets, or the turning sheets that were provided. And then you just move into the conditions where, again, many of this is boilerplate for development plan, but some are unique to this site. So, you know, obviously, the first one is it's regarding the plans that are provided from this applicant. So if it was to deviate quite a bit, you know, that would be up to the board to determine whether it's a minor or major change. That's kind of your standard language there. Obviously, erosion controls would be inspected by myself, and I would likely bring Ann Matthews since there's wetlands there. Construction hours, let's see, all construction to be on-site. O-N-M plan through the stormwater management, obviously, I know GZA had provided some of that already through the Order of Conditions. Talking about the fire code again, and, you know, obviously, I know, I believe I forwarded the email that Attorney Crowe had provided to the state fire marshal for waivers. However, you know, at this time, I've incorporated what the fire chief has required, and my understanding, the board would also require, based on his recommendations. Again, odor and noise concerns, incorporating some of what Attorney Crowe had provided to us, but getting into a little more detail about the sound analysis. Snow and ice removal, again, through that O-N-M plan. One that's a standard for the board, and I know we talked, we may have talked about it a little bit in terms of hazardous materials, but this is one of those standards that we use for everything in the Charles River watershed, and I know you guys know it, just so the applicant's aware, you know, given the location in the Charles River, phosphorus-based fertilizers, I don't know if that's going to be a concern for your applicant, but that's something that, or your client, that's something that is just something we have to do, being in the Charles River watershed. Again, exterior lighting, if you are going to provide in the future, it must be dark sky compliant, facing downwards, no spill over across property lines, incorporating all the landscaping information that the applicant has provided, amending it slightly in terms of the location of the maple trees, I believe, is what the only addition there. Let's see, yes, incorporating the applicant's recommendation for signage, for truck crossings, hours of operation. I noted in there that the applicant has requested, you know, the kind of the boilerplate, what's in the bylaw, and I think I did have a note here to ask the board, though, their concerns, or if any, regarding those timeframes, given that there won't be any lighting on site, but we can go back to, if that's okay with you. And then, you know, some safety concerns that were discussed. I know there was some information related to the mass anti-idling law, you know, that's something that they'll have to adhere to anyways, but making sure that they, we specify that, given its location and sensitive areas. Driver selection criteria, OSHA logs, prior to construction, we still schedule pre-construction meetings, and then this is all just boilerplate, you know, any easements that are required through DPW. If it changes hands, obviously, we will be notified. The use is specified for this use alone. An ASB will be provided in the day, and it needs to be recorded. That's the broad overview. You know, I'm happy to go over any specific determination or condition the board may want to.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to item number 18, hours of operation. You hit upon a concern that they like to operate from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. all days except Saturdays, except Sundays are legal holidays. My concern from a safety standpoint is they're not going to have onsite lighting there. So it doesn't make sense for them to be able to operate without adequate lighting. So I am thinking we could scale that back to either 6:00 or dusk, whichever occurs first. And we could ask for the applicant's input in that regard. But without the lighting, working at the dark, I don't think we have a safety in this a great deal. I don't think it's safe to operate this type of business without proper lighting.
Will Boyle here from J.D. Raymond, LMP Properties. We operate several yards in New England, Maine, Massachusetts, without lighting. The equipment has adequate lighting. And when we say the operation from 7:00 to 9:00, that may be just so someone can bring a truck in and park it at 8:45 at night. I mean, that's part of the operation. That isn't necessarily grinding wood. I mean, there may be someone getting loaded up at 8:30 at night so they can leave early in the morning. So this is standard practice in the construction industry. I mean, you don't see lights up at all construction sites, and you see people working at night. Of course, on the highway, you see lights set up. But we've never had a safety concern or a safety issue with equipment with lights on it.
Realize you have had any concern. You mentioned construction. Jim, what is standard in Bellingham?
For outdoor construction?
Or, you know, outdoor operation with lights. We can't rely on just the lights on the vehicles.
Yeah, so, I mean, it really does depend on the use. I know the board has gone many different ways, depending, you know, if things, I'm trying to think of something of similar. We had, you know, outdoor storage of like piping equipment, which I guess would be the closest thing we have. And there was limited outdoor lighting, if I recall, but, and I believe they were allowed to go, I don't know if it was adjusted from the 9:00 p.m. or not. This would be a rather unique one, I think, for us.
What is the board feel? Brian?
I, excuse me. You know, I think that certain activities shouldn't, you know, grinding shouldn't occur after, you know, a certain time for sure, because that sound can be heard from a significant distance from their location. So I would think that that for sure should be limited in the hours of operation, but I don't think it's safe to operate heavy machinery and heavy equipment where there are large piles of mulch that can sort of collapse on somebody, and people can disappear if the lights are facing one direction and someone standing behind the machine where there's no lights. I do think that that is a reasonable safety concern to have. So I would believe that we would condition that.
Phil?
No, I agree with that, with the grinding certainly, and, you know, with no, you know, lights. You need lights to operate. And I don't see this as being a construct, you know, equal to a construction operation. So there are some big trucks and stuff like that. I don't see that.
Dennis, you were in the construction business for years. What's your opinion?
I hated working in the dark. It was very dangerous. It's tough enough in the daytime to stay alive. So I'm in agreement. If the pile shifts, you wouldn't even hear it. And I don't think even the guy loading it with a machine would even notice it until it landed on him. So personally, I believe that you ought to have some type of lighting, or we ought to go, like you say, from 7:00 to dusk, but it's a lot safer. I know if it was my crew, I'd bring in, we bring in portable lighting all the time when we work at night, but that's very loud, the generators running. But we're usually not in a residential area or on a private scenic road.
Will Boyle from LMP again. We can certainly put together a lighting plan and propose putting lighting in that operates from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 p.m. at night. And then just, you know, if safety is an issue, then we can certainly take a look at that and just have the lights come on during the operating hours and then have them shut off, just have them on a timer.
Liz?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, hearing the applicant, that would be helpful to see a lighting plan. I don't think it, you know, can hurt to have lights in this type of business, particularly at night. I think we've discussed this in the past, so it's worth going down that path to come up with a solution.
Okay. Rod?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I would say, yeah, you're probably not going to want to be loading all kinds of stuff at night in the dark. Also, that road is kind of wonky. I don't think that there's any street lights around there. Even if so, you know, I don't think you don't, I mean, you want 18-wheelers continually coming onto that road at night anyway with traffic concerns. So I guess that would be my thought. But it would be great if there was some type of lighting plan in place. I think that would be in agreement with the applicant in that case.
And what I would like to recommend is that right now, based on information we have available, hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or dusk, whichever occurs first, pending an approval of a lighting plan provided by the applicant that deals with keeping the lighting on-site. And Jim, that is what dark sky?
Right, dark sky is standard, but then also we have a lighting bylaw that they could, you know, obviously, take a look at and provide a photometric plan to.
So I would say at this point, for the, this condition, that we go from 7:00 to 6:00 or dusk, whichever happens first, pending an approval of a lighting plan submitted by the applicant. It takes into consideration dark sky and the Bellingham plans, the Bellingham lighting requirements.
Phil, can I just make one comment on that?
Of course.
So just to go back to my point about grinding after hours and significant truck operation and loading and unloading and making sound after those hours, that, you know, there should be some condition on what it is that can operate there so we're not generating noise. Light is one thing, that's a safety concern, but then noise after times that people do arrive home and are, can hear that noise.
So would you like to see grinding limited to from 7:00 to 6:00?
I would, I would think that's reasonable. And that I don't know. I mean, I don't know, that, I don't have knowledge of the applicant's operations to know when that occurs and what it is and how frequently these trucks do arrive late to load up, and what does that entail in terms of time and noise?
Noise.
Right. Is it, is it an hour to load the truck? And what does that look like?
Will Boyle again. Do we have, there was a few noise complaints a few years ago. Do we have any record of what time those complaints came in during the day?
I am not sure offhand. I'm sure, I'm sure there is a time, though.
Okay, that'd be great to get some of that information. And, you know, obviously, the operation, it's a bit of a moving target. You know, the grinders are running during the day most of the time, and they run to a certain time at night. And obviously, you know, the sun is rising at a different time. And obviously, you know, the sun is rising at a different time every day and then setting at a different time every day. So it's a bit of a moving target as we go through this stuff. But we can certainly, you know, look at stuff and look at any complaints that came in and what time they came in and see what we can come up with for data to back up something that makes sense for everybody.
Well, in addition to complaints that have come in the past, I think part of our objective is to minimize or reduce complaints in the future. So regardless of what has happened in the past, we need to look out for the noise from the neighbors moving forward. So I think we need to incorporate that into our decision as well. Dennis? When you were working at night, the noise from trucks coming on a construction site? Can you give us your experience in that?
You can hear them.
Okay.
If you couldn't hear them, maybe you run over.
Okay. Well, I think we can come to an agreement here. But I think for this evening, we're going to stay with seven to six or dusk, pending an updated lighting plan approved by the town planner and the planning board.
But I would go further than that and say.
Excuse me, we also want to add noise in there as well. Brian?
Well, I think that was. Well, I was just going to point out that no grinding should take place after five or six o'clock at night as well. And that the introduction of lighting does not mean that full
If you grind.
full-blown operations can occur beyond that.
Good point.
And I will say, I don't know of any recent noise complaints. I know that we had discussed previously the settlement from the prior litigation. Part of that was a request for copies of any complaints that came in. And I know I haven't been notified of any. I haven't, I haven't specifically requested them, to be fair. But I, I don't, I know that there were complaints quite some time ago. But my understanding is that in the past three to maybe even five years, I don't know of any that have come in.
So I can, I live as the crow fly, I think, so I talked about this, about a mile from the facility as the crow flies. I can hear the grinders. I can drive by the grinders, hear the noise. And like I said, about a mile away, I can still prominently hear it over other sounds. So the noise of a, of a tree being ground is significant. And that occurring at night after people have returned from home and the activity of the daytime lessons is even louder. I just think common sense would suggest that. So I personally have heard and witnessed the, the volume of that operation and can hear it from great distances.
Brian, I appreciate what you said. I'm in total agreement. One thing we need to be aware of is from April until maybe October. I realize part of that is your peak season and I realize there may be grinding. But it's also the timeframe where people open their windows. And, you know, that impacts, you know, quality of a life. If you can hear it from a mile away, you know, that's a concern. So I think we need to redraft or address the seven to six P M or dusk pending the applicant providing a lighting plan and what operations will be conducted after limiting certain operations until after five P M.
Can I ask Jim a question? Jim, so we've closed the public hearing, right? So we're on a clock, right? We need to, we need to issue a decision.
Correct.
But we technically can't receive anything further. What, you know, there is now this suggestion that the applicant's willing to install lighting at their facility. What, practically speaking, what is, what are we to do with that?
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's actually somewhat of an easy solution, in my opinion. You can certainly amend the decision in front of you that simply states that a lighting plan shall be provided, you know, prior to a certificate of completion of this project. That is, you know, that will be reviewed by the town planner and the, and the planning board in compliance with our, you know, our lighting bylaw. So we could, we could certainly add that language to the condition, talking about all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant and shall not have spillover of light. We could certainly do that. And same thing with hours of operation. From what I've heard, it's, you know, in the condition where it states just that the general hours of operation, seven to nine, you can amend that to state that it's seven to six or dusk, whichever is first, pending, you know, the lighting plan or condition above regarding the lighting. In addition, you know, no grinding or noise sources of certain, of, you know, I can think of the proper wording for it, but noise sources of a certain decibel that wouldn't, you know, be conducted beyond six P M. Or vice versa, you could do the opposite where Mr. Boyle stated, you know, potentially it's loading and just the coming and going of trucks. You could certainly state something to the effect of the six P M or dusk, whichever comes first for the lighting plan. And then, and it or no, excuse me, six P M or dusk for the business, business activities excluding all trucks coming and going or and loading or something of that nature. So it limits them to just the late hours of potentially a truck entering, exiting or loading. So you have some options there.
I think that would have an end time of nine o'clock.
Right, yeah, so it would be that.
Based on approval of a light plan. Other than that, it would stop at six or dusk.
Right.
Regardless of the, you know, everything would shut down regardless of noise.
I think that's reasonable.
Anything else, anything else from the board members?
Can I, can I take a look at the turning radius? Plan one more time?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Does there something specific you wanted to see?
Where is the fence line? What, what demarcates the fence?
This, this line here.
Okay, and then what's that dash line below that, right there?
This, the property line.
Okay, so that's the property. How, how much, you know, how, how long?
The distance between them?
Yeah.
I believe it's five feet.
Five feet? Okay. All right, very good. I appreciate it.
Sure.
So Bill, if I, do you mind if I ask Jim another question?
No.
And I don't know if this is what you were going to do, but could you also review the the denial? If, I don't know what, Bill, I don't want to step in your toes, so. Yeah, I don't know if you were going to do that separately.
No, I want to, because we're voting on a favorable decision.
Can we go over the denial decision?
Sure.
One second, let me take a, pull that up. All right, so, you know, for the denial decision that was drafted, you know, it's honestly, it's very similar to what you have before you with the approval. However, obviously, the approval is condition heavy. You know, there was unfortunately some instances where we were unable to receive all the information necessary to really verify compliance under the development plan standards, specifically, you know, under the performance requirements, as well as, you know, some of the, obviously, the things that, you know, for emergency response and vehicular safety. So, you know, rather than conditioning, this is, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to come to an agreement. And so therefore, you know, the board is, has decided not to move forward favorably in this. It obviously doesn't have any real conditions in play. Just simply that there's been several determinations made.
Thank you.
Brian, you have anything else you need to, we need to add?
In terms of the favorable or the denial?
No, our next, next step in this process.
No, I think that we need to decide on which decision we're going to adopt, I think, right?
Correct.
Yep.
I would entertain a motion for a favorable decision. It's outlined this evening with the conditions on item number eighteen to be amended. Jim, was there anything else that?
Yeah, as of right now, I have fourteen and eighteen. So fourteen really discusses the lighting plan. And then eighteen discusses the hours of operation and, you know, the limitations that you guys have specified.
But then we'll spin off, they will spin off one another, correct?
Right, exactly.
Will Boyle again. Jim, can you email me a copy of the decision, please? I haven't, I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
So, Bill, I'll second the motion, but I do have some, just.
Ask what I can, you know.
Well, I'll also move it, but I do would like an opportunity to discuss it before we vote.
I'm sorry?
I'll move the motion, but I don't want to go directly to it. But I do want to comment on that, if you don't mind.
I'll need a second.
Second.
We're motion for, and it's the second in any discussion.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So just to go through the approval with conditions, paragraph B six, which is I don't know what page this is. Page three, determinations. B six B.
I'm sorry, which one, Brian?
So if you look on page three?
Yeah.
Under paragraph B six B, two forty point five oh air quality.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So if you look down about halfway through the paragraph, there's a sentence that starts on the right. The processing and storage of mulch material. And then it says, has produced strong odors beyond the property line? I would suggest revising that sentence to read. The processing and storage of mulch material produces strong and offensive odors which can be smelled significantly and then into beyond the property line and has been witnessed to regularly travel. You want me to say that again, Jim?
Brian, if you look a little further down, let me know if maybe that catches it, the processing and storage.
Where are you?
So in that same paragraph, but just further down.
Yeah, that's what I'm changing.
Oh, okay.
So the, the processing and storage of mulch material, then this is where I start to change things.
Yep.
Produces strong, and then I added and offensive.
Okay.
Odors. And then I added, which can be smelled significantly. And then you're back into that paragraph, beyond the property line. And you see, you have those changes?
Got it.
All right. In the next paragraph, paragraph C, which is on the top of page four, two forty dash fifty-one. If you look at the sentence that starts with the word however, which is the third line down, right now it reads, however, the board is not in receipt of specific dyes and other chemicals. I would add, however, comma, despite numerous requests, comma, the board is not in receipt of specific dyes and other chemicals. You see that change, Jim? Do you want me to say it again?
Nope, got it.
The only other paragraph that I think, I think it's worth discussing, and I understand the intention of it, but I, I do think it's worth a discussion is paragraph nineteen, which is on paragraph, which is on page twelve. So it's under C twelve or C nineteen, I apologize, on paragraph twelve, on page twelve. I, I, I think this is a good idea. This, this condition is a good idea and but I don't know if it's something that we can condition. And I thought maybe we could have a discussion on that.
I believe life safety issues can be conditioned, Brian. Driver criteria, OSHA logs, so on and so forth.
Right, I think that the forming of a committee, though? I don't know.
Well, you know, any prudent company has a safety committee, probably meets at least quarterly. I'm simply asking that at some point in time, they allow two residents not living in property owned by the applicant or employees of the applicant to participate in the safety committee process so they can articulate any safety concerns they have twice a year based on what is happening and what they're seeing.
So I, I'm not, I'm, again, I think it's a good idea and I'm not against it, but I don't think we can mandate it. If the applicant would be agreeable to some outreach like that, that's fine. But I, I'm just concerned that we might be reaching too far.
Jim, what's your opinion?
Yeah, I understand the safety concerns that, you know, the chairman has brought up, you know, several times throughout this hearing. So I think that was the consideration. That doesn't, you know, the chairman has brought up, you know, several times throughout this hearing, so I think that was the, the consideration when including this condition. You know, ultimately, at the end of the day, some of this stuff is, it's, it's already required, I mean, it's state law from anti-idling and, and having ocean logs. You know, certainly, this is something where. You know, I, I think it would be nice to, to know that we have a, a very well safe business in town, and it would be nice to have, but, but again, I, I think I see, I hear Brian's point. And, you know, it's just something where, you know. If the applicant is willing to do, great, and, but if, you know, you guys have. Been working rather well together to move forward, if this is one that, you know, we, we decide not to move forward with, you know, I understand that, too.
Will, are you there? Can you hear me, Will?
I can.
What I'm looking for. Is your opportunity for you, a couple of things. To meet twice a year with two designated neighbors. Not associated with your operation. Discuss safety concerns they have, or they may have seen. Twice a year. In addition, we would also like to have a copy of your. Driver selection criteria and hiring and training criteria. To, to make sure that you're doing. Perhaps semi-annually or annually. Motor vehicle reviews to make sure people have not had excessive speeding or accidents. In addition to a copy of your ocean lock. That, that would revert back to. Safety issues you've had during the year. So if you could, you know, agree to provide those, I, I, I think we could. Have that removed from the conditions.
Yeah. I'd have to, I'd have to think that one over, I mean, that, that's, you're asking us to do a lot of work. And I think that that is, I mean, that's. We, we have a lot of employees, we have a lot of businesses, it's not just this one. We have a lot of safety measures in place, and I think that, you know, we're. Being held to a special condition. That other companies aren't being held to, and this is, you're asking for quite a bit here. So I'll have to get together with, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no, and I'm not saying yes. But I'll get together with Kim and talk to her about it. I mean, I certainly don't mind providing you. With this updated safety plan once a year for you guys to review. But, you know, I don't go to my neighbor and give them advice about their business because I don't know anything about their business. So that, to me, is like, what, why would we pull in neighbors to give us advice, safety advice? Of all things about our business that they may not know anything about. Of course, with you, you have experience with safety. Jim Cutler has experience with safety, Brian may have experience with safety. But, you know, just picking a neighbor blindly and saying, come in and give us safety advice.
That's. I want you to be able to work with the neighbors to find out what they're, what they're saying about what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we.
We learned something two weeks ago.
We have an open door policy, anybody can call me anytime, I can talk to them, they can talk to Mike on site. I mean, we, we run a pretty tight ship, anybody that comes in that works for us. You know, these, these are professional truck drivers, so. You know, we screen them, but they're, they're drug tested, they're in a drug pool, the state is constantly checking on them. The insurance company is constantly checking on them. So, you know, putting another measure in place, especially with these class A drivers that are under so much scrutiny right now. You know, I don't, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Just my opinion, but that's, that's my opinion, so. These, these people that drive, I can't just say guys, because we have some female drivers, too. They, they go through a lot to keep their licenses, they're professional drivers.
I also know that there are some loopholes. Within the system that the state of Massachusetts is trying to correct. With respect to bad drivers. Want to make sure that, you know, a program is in place.
Yeah, we usually fire bad drivers, so.
Okay.
You, you know, so we have a lot of customers that we're taking care of and. And, you know, these people need to be the best of the best, and they are.
Okay.
So they're, they're not open road truckers, they're, they're going into city to deliver mulch. So.
So Brian, what would you like to see done?
Well, I, I, I just don't think that we can condition it. I, like I said, I understand the intention, and I think it's an admirable intention, but I just don't think it's. Something that we could, we could mandate on high, so I, I would suggest that we strike paragraph nineteen.
I'm sorry?
I would suggest we strike paragraph nineteen.
Okay, any other board members?
So safety, of course, is, is very important, but I think I agree with Brian is. We're gonna have a hard. Reading through this, I think I agree with Brian that strike nineteen. You know. You know. I, I appreciate safety committees. Work of, you know. Been around safety committees. It's very specific to, you know. Those situations. I think that the mechanism for complaints would probably be something going to gym during the. Now. If there's a complaint about odor, there's a complaint about noise, if there's a complaint about. Any, any of the issues that a business would. You know, have complaints, I think. The bylaws dictate what that would be, and I think I agree with Brian on this one, strike nineteen.
Dennis?
I think I'd like to hear some opinions on this.
I think I'm gonna. Leave that up to Jim and the attorneys.
Okay. Liz?
Yeah, I can, I can see where Brian's coming from, I think, you know, while a, a good idea in concept, it could easily. Become just another avenue for neighbors to complain as opposed to be constructive about safety, so. You know, that's not really my area of expertise, but I, I see where Brian is coming from.
Ron?
Yeah, I can see where both you, Bill and Brian are coming from. And it, I, this isn't exactly my expertise either, so. Yeah, I, I think I actually like the Dennis route on this one. So. Yeah, I.
I, I don't object to having it withdrawn, I just want to simply state. What I've asked for is something that. Was standard for. Except for the input of. Neighbors. Because mostly the trucking companies are insured. And construction companies were not in the middle of neighborhoods, that's why I added, that you hear from the neighbors. I was, I was hoping that we could. Have, you know, a, a good relationship. Between the applicant and the neighbors. And the other thing is something that was standard for. My life as a risk manager, but I, I am not objecting to having it removed.
All right, so that, those are the only changes that I. I believe I had.
So that, I think what we need to do is. Technically, we, we have changed the motion, so we need an updated motion, Brian.
Well, I'll move to approve the. Or, or adopt the, the approval decision as amended.
And Jim, you have those amendments?
Yeah, I have all those amendments, yep.
All those in favor of approving the favorable decision based on the conditions outlined this evening, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, real quick, was there a second? Thank you, Dennis.
Second by Dennis. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining. That motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thank you, so obviously, since we're via Zoom, I'll need your, normally we just get your signatures right here, and then I can get everything out the door, but. If there's an opportunity to come by tomorrow to sign, that would be awesome, that way we can get everything rolling, if you need me to swing by your guys' place, just. Let me know if you're around, I'm actually gonna be out on sites much of the day, so I'm happy to swing by and. Going to anybody's house to, to get a signature if you're working remotely. And then as soon as I get those signatures, I'll get it scanned in, and, and attorney Crowe, I'll get you a copy over to you, and obviously we'll get.
You'll get one, Steve. And Will.
Yeah, of course, yeah, and I'll get it over, well, I'm sure attorney Crowe can get it over to Will, but I can see see Will, too, that's not a problem.
Thank you, and Jim, I was gonna email you after, just to get a copy of the draft, so presented to the board also, so I can sort of follow along before that's finalized, too.
Yep, yeah, I can get it, yeah, once I incorporate the edits, I can give you the, the draft that's not signed, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Any other item this evening, Jim?
No, that, that's it for this evening, I guess.
I like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
All in favor, German, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, that motion passes, Brian?
Good night, Billingham.
I want to thank the applicant and the attorney for their cooperation during this process.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, have a good night.